Outdo us, wearing a suit and tie and all this. I mean, come on.
He's the chairman.
Again, we have to look respectable. Perhaps.
You could have gone to law school too, Rich.
They wouldn't accept me.
Too late now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Someone went to school at Hard Knocks.
Yeah, but you learn a lot that way.
That was me. That was me.
Okay, everybody. So I've gotten a thumbs up, so I want to welcome everybody to the May tenth version of the Town of Manlius Planning Board. Uh, the first item on the agenda, as always, is a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic.
One nation.
Indivisible.
Liberty and justice for all.
Very good.
So folks, the first item on the agenda after the pledge is approval of the minutes from our meeting conducted on April the twenty second, twenty sixth.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Richard to approve, and I think it was Ann Kelly came in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The first item on the agenda is the application by Alex Hebert, and this is the one that I recuse myself from, so I'm gonna give the reins to Fred.
Joe, can I?
I saw. Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Can I jump in, Joe, just for a couple of things? And I'm not sure if this is the proper time, but if it's not, tell me it's not, and I'll come back later.
It depends on what you're jumping in on.
We'll find out in a minute here. Um, in the minutes that we just approved, we gave Braedlor two weeks to clean up that KG, whatever the hell it is.
Can we hold off? Uh, can we hold off on that? We can talk about that as the, uh, an additional agenda, uh, other business.
Okay.
If you know.
That's fine. And the other item I had was CVE North America. I just got something today at one o'clock, which is a new site plan, I think. Lisa, I, I, I'm not sure what you sent us today.
I don't think it's a site plan. I think it was just a revision that Jamie had asked for, maybe with their council for easements.
Okay.
Why don't we wait to that agenda item, Rich?
Okay, that's fine. Okay, I'll keep my mouth shut. Okay.
So it's in your capable hands, Fred.
Okay, go have a cup of coffee and we'll take care of it. Mr. Hebert was here. I saw his name.
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, okay, welcome.
Thank you.
The item that we have on the agenda tonight was to have a public hearing, so I'd entertain a motion at this time whether to waive the reading of the notice of the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we got that done. Uh, I don't suppose there's anything, Mr. Hebert, to, to, uh, add to your presentation from last time. It's pretty simple, uh, two lot subdivision. But, uh, I'd entertain a motion now to open the public hearing.
So. Get second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. Is there any member of the public that has any comments about this subdivision, two lot subdivision?
Brad, I have nobody in the waiting room and nobody in the Q and A.
Okay, entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to close.
Second.
Close.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carried. We're not going to take any action on this proposal tonight because we haven't heard from the county, as I understand it. Right.
Correct.
So, um, Mr. Hebert will see you again, uh, next meeting, I suppose.
Okay.
Do you understand what that, it, so the county only meets once, once a month, so if it doesn't get quite in on the right cycle, it kicks to the next time, and the county has to act in order for there, um, to be a valid resolution. So.
Do they meet before we meet again, before the next, our next meeting?
Yes, they'll meet Wednesday.
Okay. So I'm sor- sorry about that delay, but that's the way it is.
So, but, so the next meeting just be, if the county approves it or not approves it, then you guys would approve it or not approve, I'm assuming?
I assume, yeah.
Okay.
As far as I know.
They really, they really don't approve or not approve. They just give recommendations.
Okay.
And I don't imagine they'll have, I can't think of anything that's very, uh, you know, troublesome that they might.
No. Okay.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, for handling that. Uh, the next item on the agenda is an application by Robert Karan, Karen Holmes. This is relative to a final approval of Phase Five of Austin Meadows. This is Austin Meadows Drive Tax Map Number one, one, three dot two dash four dash three point one. We did have a planning strategy meeting where we met with, uh, both Doug Miller and, uh, council. Uh, we reviewed the old plan and the new plan, and it's our determination that the final plan is in substantial conformity with the preliminary that had been approved previously. Uh, but if anyone had any further questions of the developer on this, uh, now is the time to ask.
Joe, the only, the only comment or question I would have is it, in the past, we have typically asked the developer to show the building envelope on the lot, so we knew where the structure would be. This does not have that. Now, if this is what was approved before, I guess we've got to live with it, but that's typically what we've asked for.
And you're correct on that, Richard, but the, the preliminary plan, that was what was on the preliminary plan as well.
Okay, and the number of lots is identical.
Exactly.
Okay, and I, I did, Rich, um, I did talk to Bob Karen this afternoon, and I think Bob's on here. Uh, Bob and Sharon said they were gonna be on. And basically, um, what we've done in the rest of that subdivision is the, um, setback off the road is twenty-five feet. So I would just have Bob put that note on there, and then, um, similar to the last subdivision, we did a Rolex. Um, that's the layout that has been ongoing at, uh, Austin Meadows with setbacks between the homes within the, uh, requirements of the New York State Building Code. And that's consistent with, uh, my discussions with Ria Dito. Okay, so not only the setback from the road, but also the setback in the rear yard, side yard, everything? Um, it's just side to side, right? So it's twenty-five feet off the road, and then New York State Building Code requires a, a minimum of ten foot, um, separation eve to eve. Okay, so if we're to approve this, that would be part of the motion? Yes. Correct me if I'm wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but that's what we discussed today. Bob.
Wait, we're trying.
Yeah. Yeah, you're on. Yeah.
Oh.
So Doug?
Now?
Yeah.
Doug, you can hear us? So, um, so Austin Meadows doesn't have building lots. We have, uh, we have each resident, the footprint is owned by the resident, the resident of that home, and the rest of the property is all owned by the HOA. So, uh, I, if you've driven through there, it started out as duplexes, and then because that was, uh, it was more desirable to have, um, single-family units, we changed over, and so we've built, I don't know, there's about thirty single-family homes in there now, and this section that was approved to be thirteen homes is exactly what we want to continue to do with this, and and all the rest of the neighborhood that we, we built about twenty-five houses there, and we've done, they've had a, a front yard building setback at twenty-five feet, like you talked about, but there really is no side yard, um, setback because there's no property line. Um, as long as we hold at least a ten-foot minimum from eve to eve, the houses go in accordingly to that. So there's, there's these, most of the, so, so it's hard because there's no real lots, no real lots, just a, just a, a property bound, a property boundary for that, you know, so that's, that's why it's a little bit, it's not exactly like other developments that can have like a rear yard setback and a, and, and a side yard setback because there's no, there's no lot lines per se. Does that, does it, does that make sense? It does, and we, and we understand, we, we just did one recently for Rolex, uh, Freeman Estates, identical, same exact format.
Awesome. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any, any other questions, or at this point, I would entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And your motion is to, uh, approve the final plan?
Yes.
Second. Second by Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Karen, uh, it is approved. Your final plan is approved because it does, uh, conform substantially with the preliminary plan from several years ago.
Thank you.
How many more lots do you have in there? How many more lots does he have?
So we have, we have now.
Do you hear us?
Do you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, we have two homes under construction, one of which is sold, and a second one that's a spec. We have three lots that are available to build on still in the older sections, and then this thirteen section, thirteen lot, or thirteen home section is, is gonna be it for that subdivision.
Okay.
Okay. On the, on the west end, there's, uh, probably two, two or three lots that, that Ood had sold to the Brandon Jacobs, who in turn sold some to Harrington, that there, that there's, um, there's a, a, a house they built that's been there a couple of years that finally sold and closes soon, and then they have a second spec under construction, and there is a few other lots up on our end, which is the east end, or, you know, east end of the development that, um, that they own, that are owned by, that are owned by
Some Harrington.
Some Harrington and some Brandon Jacobs, I think. Just only three more up there. So, so the whole subdivision has, we have three, and there's about maybe five or six other ones, so there's about nine buildable residents to go in the old sections, and then these new thirteen, and that will complete the neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you. I knew they were closing, getting close. Thanks.
Hope, we're hoping. We're trying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we're gonna move on to the next item, and this is the application by CVE North America. This is their second presentation with respect to subdivision site plan and a special use permit for a solar array on Do Good Road. Tax map number ninety-nine dash one dash three. Do we have someone here on behalf of, uh, CVE?
Good morning, this is, or good afternoon, sorry. Uh, this is Ed Puerta. I'm an attorney with Nixon Peabody. We represent CVE.
Thank you, sir. Uh, our members were, uh, looking at the various plans. Did they have any further questions relative to this proposal by the developer?
Oh, um, I just wanted to make a statement that the, um, the last time that we met, I was charged with trying to, uh, get some information about uh, this type of array that is, uh, the, the large megawatt, that it's on five separate parcels. Um, I did speak, um, to Chris Carrick at the county, uh, on reference of, uh, Sarah Ballinger, and, um, he was able to give me somewhat of a set of brains on this. Um, apparently, it's, it has not been frequently used in New York. We were concerned, I think, about, uh, it's was, because they're dividing into five lots, were they trying to get around something? Is this something the state was okay with? And I went to a report that, um, it's a valid, um, scheme, um, and so that's, that is not a concern. Also, um, I spoke to Jared La- Lusk, um, counsel on this, and, uh, they provided, I asked them to provide, um, the easements between the lots. So, uh, for the subdivision purposes, our concern is that, um, these lots aren't all, you know, crazy, not, not accessible, um, to the, to the road, so they have to have the appropriate easements.
Okay.
Also, I'm concerned about Lot Four. I just want to make sure there's enough, um, buffering between my property and theirs, because that's only fifty feet in with. It, does anyone, can anyone share that, um, subdivision plan?
I'm not on my laptop. I can't.
Ed, anyone on your team able to do that?
Uh, I do not have, uh, the most recent subdivision plans in front of me. I'm sorry. I'll see if I can pull them up out of my email. I know what was delivered earlier today, um, was the updated plan reflecting our, uh, proposed cross-easement agreements. So I believe that's what was delivered, uh, and what Jamie was referencing.
Right.
I can sh- I can share that if you think it would be helpful.
Sure.
And I, I, Joe, can I speak to this now?
You can indeed.
I, uh, as you know, I've always had a problem with getting plans at such short notice as what we got today. It is not fair to the planning board. It's definitely not fair to me, because I, I can speak for myself, that we are reviewing something that I haven't had a chance to really look at. I mean, I, I, I just was able to print it not too long ago, and w- we should, we should be careful, this is just my opinion, to act or do things based on a plan that we've never seen before. That is not fair to us.
I agree fully with that, and, and Ed, I think you understand that, uh, we're really not given a lot of consideration to that. Some of us have not had an opportunity to review it, having received it on such short notice.
Um, I, I don't dispute any of that. We ourselves only received it this morning. We forwarded it to you immediately upon receipt. Um, I, to be fair to CVE, I don't think this was something that was requested before last week, uh, but I completely understand your reticence to make a ruling on something you've only just received within the last twelve hours.
Well, we, we certainly are not going to make, um, make a ruling. We could certainly call for the public hearing, and by the way, if, um, if in the course of the next two weeks, we find that this is insufficient in some way, we'll, we'll postpone or delay the public hearing, but if, uh, there was time to review it, then, uh, we can certainly keep the matter moving.
I I would like to, to jump in again if I can, and this was something we discussed at the last meeting, and I understand the state has certain regulations of how many megawatts can be generated from each different five-acre parcels or whatever it was. But when this law went together and we had a separation of one mile, the purpose was we didn't want to have this huge field of solar panels, and we wanted to have, w- we didn't want to ha- drive through an area where we had nothing but solar panels. And I would just caution the board at this point in reviewing this application to think that through, uh, that we do have in the law that there must be a mile separation. So I'll throw that out there.
A mile separation, Rich, between, uh, how large, uh, group of panels in each, in each place?
From each farm. And I don't have the law in front of me, Fred, but the, the idea was that you wouldn't have farm after farm after farm of these solar panels. You would have some separation, uh, between them, and, and what we're doing here, what we're being asked to do here is to subdivide the land to have three pretty substantial solar farms, uh, one on top of each other, and I just, I, I'm just pointing out that that is something that we haven't done before, and we should, we should consider what we're trying to do and what we're gonna do.
I think this is, and I, I do not, I apologize, I do not know all of the solar, solar projects that have been approved. And, and actually, Lisa, one question I have is maybe we can get like a running list of
Oh, sure.
projects that we have, um, just to kind of, so we have an idea when we get these new proposals and stuff to find out where they are located. Uh, so that's a side note. But also, I think, I remember last time, was this one of the very first, if not the first, large community solar array we've looked at? So these are, I think, different from the smaller ones.
So I think we will see larger ones.
Yeah, Valerie, that's accurate. This is the largest we've ever looked at.
Okay.
No, it's just that our law said that there had to be one mile between, you know, between different farms, and there's three farms here for me. I know it's one parcel, but it's, I mean, one person, but it's three different farms for me, in my estimation.
Yep, and that's all I'm trying to point out, is that we have a law, that's what it says, and this conflicts with that.
Right.
We, uh, we have reached out to the town board. The town board is actively engaged in coming up with a comprehensive plan for development in the Town of Manlius, and I reached out to Sarah Ballinger. I informed her that we've completed five uh, solar panels so far, that we have three applications pending, and I asked for input from the town board, and, um, more particularly from the, the committee for the comprehensive plan, is what their intentions are, so that we can know and understand uh, what they are looking for relative to town development. They will report back to us as soon as they reach some type of a consensus on that. Um, but they know we're concerned about it. They know we're looking for input. And at this point, I think you can interpret this solar plant either two ways, that it is three separate solar plants, or that it's one solar plant simply separated by the subdivision lots that they are artificially creating to satisfy, uh, the State Energy Department.
Joe, how close, how close is the next solar plant to this?
I've been told it's just over one mile down the road.
So we've exceeded that one-mile expectation, right?
If we consider this one plant, yes, sir.
Yeah.
Uh, additionally, as we consider this, I would recommend that, uh, notwithstanding that this is a subdivision, because it technically has to be for this type of community solar project, that there be, um, a covenant, uh, on the property that these are not building lots.
I think last time too, right, they, they told us, I think this is the one where they told us that they really can't build homes on the rest of this property, I think. They say something like that, where it wasn't really buildable.
There was a sewer there, which there is down on East Seneca Turnpike. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think, Jamie, if you look at these, these lots, some don't even have road frontage, so they really aren't buildable lots, and I think it should be fairly easy, if we do that, to say they aren't buildable lots.
If we, if we throw in the covenant, then there's no good, gonna be no issue about it. That they, it would be no building lot, period, and, and that's a good way to handle it.
I think I, if I can make two other points. One, this is kind of a secluded area. Anyway, it's surrounded by so much that it's, um, it's really hard to see, like nowhere from any road will we really be driving by thinking that's a lot of solar. Um, and another point is
I can see it from my backyard.
Oh, the, not, the Lot Four, okay. Um, that is, um, the other thing I was thinking is, in some of the training recently on that solar, and speaking of the comprehensive plan, they, um, they did mention in the training, one thought is to have like a moratorium on some of these proposal, solar proposals until the comprehensive plan is done, um, or to give time so that we can look at them again more, for lack of a better word, comprehensively, as to where we want these larger ones to be.
Well, I, it'd be nice if they gave us that direction, but we haven't been, so we've got to deal with the law that's on the books today and figure out what we're gonna do with that, be- because I, Valerie, I agree with you. I, we've approved so many of these, and nothing has even started yet, that it would be nice to just slow it down and figure out what we're doing.
I'd like to ask a question. Um, is the fact that they're not buildable because there's no access, could that change between now and, say, the next twenty or twenty-five years? Yeah, I ask that question because if we turn this over to the solar array, well, it's great for renewable energy, and it does provide some additional revenue to the town, I think it's a small fraction of the revenue that developed homes would provide, if you could in fact put homes there. So my question is, is the only reason that you can't build on it because there's no access and no utilities, could that change over time?
The answer is, it's not just because of that. There's a lot of other subdivision regulations that, like, they, they have to front on a real road, um, things like that.
Okay.
And, and Arnie, just to, to further that, I'm not even sure we can approve a subdivision that doesn't have road frontage, even though it's for a solar, I, I, I don't know where the road frontage is and how many feet there is and so on and so forth, so we might not even be able to approve this.
That's why it's been very hard to see it.
Is there road frontage up? We can't see it in the screen share right now, but I, it's further up towards, like, above Lot, there you go. Is that road frontage on the Do Good?
Yeah.
That was one question I had, because that seems awful, awfully close to the property on the left of it.
Well, I'm looking at, I don't know what this lot is to the right. Yeah, I, I don't even know if that has road frontage.
Which one, Rich?
Uh, to the far right. I'm not sure if I'm looking northeast, west. I if I, I'm looking at the one that is to the right.
This one here?
Well, put, you just had the, the cursor there.
Let me see if I can zoom in and make it a little bit easier.
Yeah, that one, that, that one right there, does it even have road frontage?
No.
No, so that's not even a lot that we can approve.
So it, uh, needs to go to the CBA for a variance.
Right.
This is in the back of that property, and it butts up to my property. There's only fifty feet there, but that's the town. But I've got to check to see about the, the, uh, the trees back there. I mean, there's this stuff going on, but I don't know what it is.
So there's, there's a lot of questions.
Well, we've got special permit. We've got subdivision. We've got site plan. Now I think we're throwing in variance. That's not to say this can't be done. Right. But I think we need to, um, get a general idea of what the board is thinking, and I've heard, there's a, I've heard a concern about the setback, um, from one, one property minimally, and
Uh, but I, it, I have another concern about the one-mile distance between different farms. I mean, if we, if we approve this, that, you know, all bets are off on that.
Well, I think that there can be findings made in that respect, if the board is inclined to agree with this, the way that it's laid out, because it's not an absolute dictate, uh, in the law. So I think that that would be something that could make a finding if it, this is looked at at one prod, as one project, if the board is so inclined.
Jamie, I'll disagree. I think that's in the law. There has to be a one-mile separation. I don't think we have discretion.
I don't think it says has to. Uh, it'd be nice if they could flag the corner of these, uh, where they're gonna put them.
Ed, is there a way of flagging the corners?
The corners for the actual, uh, improvements, the erase?
Yeah.
Um, we could do that, yes.
Something you can see.
Where, uh, for, for specificity, so you could see them from the road or from which vantage point?
I'm gonna walk down there.
I, I, I think you, I think you need to flag the corners of where the arrays are gonna go so we can.
Right.
Understand where they lay on a property.
Right.
I think one of the other questions we had was, um, they mentioned last time they, that they were gonna, the applicant was gonna reach out to the school district. Since it's adjacent to this, the high school property. I wondered if they've done that.
Uh, that I cannot say one way or the other. Um, I'm filling in for my partner Jared, who is much more technically versed than I am. I am. Uh, actually a simple dirt attorney, but, uh, I can find out where we are when discussions with the school district.
Okay, thank you.
Can, when you, um, flag these corners. Of the install, where the installation is going, would you let our secretary know?
We can certainly work with you. Um, we'll, we'll arrange for timing and, you know, if we want to get some people onto the property, we can arrange for that as well.
Great.
I had intended to, uh, entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing on three different issues. The, um, the subdivision, the site plan and the special use permit. But I'm, I'm hearing that there seems to be a serious issue as to the legality of whether. Um, whether this is one plant or three plants and whether it can be within a mile of other plants. Do we need to develop that issue and get an answer on that before we move on? Jamie?
So. My, uh, uh, my opinion is that this can be treated as a single. Um, unit, it's unusual, it's the only way this can be built. Um, according to the state, so I, I think that that can be, um, determined. By this board as it, for them not to be separate arrays. But a, but a single, a single project. I believe that finding can be made for this particular. Type of solar project. Um, I do. I think that possibly, um, we could, um, have a public hearing on. The subdivision and the special permit. And open it. Or an informational public hearing to see where the public stands on this, either one. And because, uh, there's no question, but that it's going to have to go for a variance.
Well, Jamie, don't they need the variance prior to a public hearing on the subdivision?
Not necessarily. It can be held open. But the, but the question, the, the thing is, do we want to send them to ZBA? And don't we in fact want to make some kind of recommendation to ZBA? It's a, you know, it's a chicken and egg thing. And how do you make a recommendation if you haven't heard from the public?
Okay, all right, okay.
Just a, just a thought process in that.
Well, my, my comment would be, are we setting ourselves up for something that might bite us in the future?
You have to, that, well, that's always a question. But that's what this board has to look at. You know, you don't want to, um, you don't want to walk outside the lines and make exceptions where it's not. Uh, appropriate, but on the other hand, you do want to look at the law in such a way that would make. This project. Potentially, okay.
Mike, next. Question, is the town board, uh, are they working on criteria for size? Maximum size of a solar array in one location? And if they are. Well, I guess we ought to wait and see what they come up with. But if they really are getting, do you know?
Well, this, this would be totally up to the, up to the town board to talk about putting a, a moratorium. On, on the solar array situation, but right now there is no moratorium.
Fred, to, to directly answer your question, I do not believe they are looking at it. When we put the solar law together, five, six years ago, whatever it was, we didn't want to see. All of Manlius covered by solar farms. So we put that one mile. Distance in just so that there'd be some separation and we'd have the ability to. Monitor or whatever you want to call it, these, these solar farms, um. To me, this is, this is, these are three farms. These are three separate farms. That we need to think about. Now, the law's a little vague. I'll be honest, because the last time I looked at it. It said one mile from an existing farm. So are these existing? Are they not? Are we? So there needs to be some thought given to what we're doing here.
I think we do, yeah, definitely. I would advocate for some more time for thought and some research and maybe discussion with the town board because. I think, I mean, just again, back to the comprehensive plan, I'm, I mean, I, um. Think the solar farms and the projects are good ideas in a way of the future, but also I want to make sure we're putting them. In the best places. And I know, you know, like. We definitely don't want like all of our good farm and agricultural areas turned over to solar necessarily, but. You know, there's good soil and bad soil, and so. There's a lot to look at with projects of this size, I think. So I don't know if we can have some more discussion with. The town board or at least the comprehensive planning folks can kind of see what their thoughts are.
Kind of want having a, a work session with, with some representatives from the town board and the planning board. I think. Um. Because I just to require, um, to require the same kind of frontage, for instance, Rich. For a solar farm doesn't seem like it's applicable to take that from where you're building homes. To a solar farm because this solar farm doesn't need any frontage for any practical reason. You know, you, one, one, one little road, one road going in, there's all that they need.
I understand, but I, the concern I guess I would have is that I don't want to have. Miles and miles of solar farms in the town of Manlius.
I understand that, but we're, we're kind of blessed with a lot of hills and trees that, that kind of break up the landscape, you know, and it's not like driving out. Across Nevada.
I, I agree, but I think Ann had a good idea, you know, to stake where they're gonna put these panels. So maybe we could walk the property and find out, you know, exactly what kind of buffer error they have, uh, which I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I'm all kind of more in favor of, uh, making a judgment about. Their visibility from the road and from the other, other neighborhoods, a case by case basis, um.
We, uh, we required staking and flagging for Townsend Road. We asked that they do that so that we could identify that. Based upon what I'm hearing here, um, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn this matter for further discovery. So that we might work with the town board and get a little more input from the town board.
I would. I'll make that motion, Joe.
I would second it.
Okay, okay. Motion made by Richard and second by Fred. All, all in favor of, uh, granting that adjournment so that we can further develop the record.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I, I would like to, um, um, stay that, uh, tell you what the law does say about the one mile. It says the following, in no event shall an LSES, large solar. Something system be placed within one mile of an existing Ellis, yes, without specific findings. By the planning board that such placement does not adversely affect the community character of the surrounding properties. So it's not an absolute.
Okay, I'm glad you found that, Jamie.
I know I had read it before, I just had to find it again.
Is there a way that they can stake these, um, soon so we can look at them instead of waiting until after the meeting and stuff?
I know C V E has, um, you know, its attention fully focused on this. I can report back as to the timing on staking. You know, within a few days. Uh, I'll speak with our engineering team, see what their availability is.
Great.
Thank you, Ed.
All right, thank you.
We did not set another date for this. Uh, is everybody comfortable putting it on for May twenty-fourth for two weeks from now, tentatively?
No, I'm not. I don't think that's time enough. I don't think we know enough about the issue. To make an intelligent, informed decision. I'd like to see it adjourned until we have the time to talk to the town board. Learn more about what this is all about and see where they're headed and what, what exactly, what, what can, this is a precedent. Because the first time we've done a huge solar array and, uh, I'm especially careful about not sticking our foot in it. When we don't know as much as we should.
I'm inclined to agree with Arnie. Um, it, it almost sounds like the town should have a comprehensive plan. And, and, you know, this is, as Rich has said, this is, I don't know, five, six or seven of these now.
Yeah.
And we, we don't, we haven't seen anything done yet. But where does it go in the future? You know, if we keep approving these, what happens to us?
Well, and, and you're right about that, Mike. My, my concern though is the comprehensive plan is being worked on now. They've hired an engineering firm to assist with that. But it's their guesstimate that it's gonna take a good year to come up with a fully developed comprehensive plan.
I'll be more like a year and a half, Joe. It'll be the end of twenty twenty-two before they've got a real plan.
So the question is, how long do we need to postpone this matter?
I guess I would recommend that we try, Joe, to get a, a working group of. Board members in a working group of this board together. And, and flesh out these issues because ultimately. Um, I mean, there's, there are several issues here, um, not, not the least of which, um. Is that perhaps there needs to be a moratorium. It, otherwise, we have to keep moving forward with the application that's before us and make our own determinations. You know, with some town board input, I suppose, if that's what you want, but we can't just, we can't just have, we can't just say the project go away. Right? We will be bound to act. It might be an act in the negative. I, I can't say that, but we would have to make some kind of informed decision at some point.
And I'm thinking because of the, the next one we have on the agenda as well.
Yeah. All right, timetable. Somebody want to make a recommendation as to, uh, an adjourn date?
I think Arnie did.
I, I heard an indefinite postponement. That's what I was hearing from Arnie. Am I wrong, Arnie?
No, Joe, you're right. But I, 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 I do respect the fact that I don't want to put it off for a year and a half. That's not my intent. But I think that, uh, we should be able to get together with the town board and also with the developer. To find out more about what exactly are we looking at? Uh, where are we going with the comprehensive town plan? Otherwise, the town plan is gonna have to be built around all the things that we've approved. And they may look back and say, geez, I wish we hadn't done that. So I think that they should know what we're doing, what's going on. And this is a big part. Of what we've been doing as a planning board. We're now up to eight or nine of these things. And even though they're not in the ground. I wouldn't be surprised if, uh, all of a sudden, a lot of people start digging holes and planting solar arrays. Maybe that's fine. And I, I have nothing against the solar array. I, I love the idea. But I, I share Rich's concern and Ann's concern and Fred's concern. Uh, I don't know enough and I took the same course that Valerie did. And even with all that, you know, four hours of education. I'm not that comfortable with this particular one.
Okay.
Other, uh, option would be, you know, ma- adjourn it for one month's time. So that there can be a report back minimally.
I like that.
That would, that would be reasonable.
Yeah, I think that's.
Uh, did I hear a motion? Did I hear a motion?
I'll move that we adjourn for a month, study the issue and report back to the planning board.
I'll second that.
Motion by Arnie, second by Rich. Valerie, you almost made it in there.
Almost. I wouldn't be good on Jeopardy.
I will say this, I would be happy to serve on whatever intermediary board between the two. Um, the town board and planning board. I'd be happy to do that.
I would.
I would as well.
Yeah.
Plenty of people. Uh, we're gonna postpone this then for one full month to June fourteenth. Is that right, Lisa?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so the matter is postponed. Ed, we're gonna try to figure out what we're doing and, uh, report back to you, sir.
I appreciate everyone's time this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And as soon as they stake it, I'll be happy to go out.
Thank you, Ann. Uh, the next item on the agenda, we're back into it again. Andrew Day, Labelle Associates. This is an initial presentation relative to site plan and special permit. This is a Salt Springs Road solar array located at eighty-five forty Salt Springs Road. Tax map number one hundred dash one dash eleven point one. And. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, good evening, members of the planning board. Thanks for that great segue into our project as well. Um. Ari Goldberg from the law firm of Barclay Damon, the applicant. Uh, joined tonight by Drazan Gasek, project engineer from Labelle Associates, and Andrew Day from the applicant.
What is your address for this property?
Eighty-five forty Salt Spring Road.
Okay. We have two addresses.
Okay.
I've seen eight, four, nine, zero used as well.
Do you, do you own the property? Are you optioning it? Wh- where does that stand?
Contract purchaser. Oh, sorry, Andrew.
Yes, yeah, we have a contract to purchase.
Okay, okay.
I just want, so, could start on a brief presentation here. You may recognize some of the people on this call. Um, this is the same applicant team behind the Taft solar project. That was previously approved and we are in fact about to commence construction. And now we're here to discuss this other project before you. Applicants proposing a five megawatt community solar facility. Uh, the property is about eighty-five acres, but the array itself only permanently disturbs about two of those acres and that's between the solar array itself. And the access way. Uh, any grasslands that are disturbed during construction will be reseeded. Overall, too, uh, we've really minimized the disturbance. That was a key point for us, uh, no impact to wetlands. Removing a small cops of trees to the south and that's in order to maintain the existing tree line throughout the property. And retaining the currently used agricultural areas of the parcel. Because the array itself only occupies unused grasslands. I saw that was a point of conversation in your previous applicant. About, uh, use of agricultural lands. There's also a fence along all the arrays, uh, substantial landscaping buffer to the west and to the north. And the array as designed also complies with all the necessary setbacks. And as you probably recall from the Taft project and others, uh, solar use is very passive, creates minimal permanent traffic. And next to no noise, lighter odor, odor once installed. And just two more points on the project. Uh, the initial site plan that was before you contained a battery energy storage component. That's been removed entirely. And then we also do believe this pro- project is subject to, uh, mandatory referral. Under G M L two thirty-nine M because it's on County Road one thirty-two, which is Salt Springs Road. Um, under your town solar law, as you know, the project requires a special use permit and site plan approval from this board at a public hearing. But for now, we're considering that a future approval. For tonight, we're only here to reintroduce ourselves, introduce you to this project. Answer any questions you might have. And then based on this, uh, board's robust and evolving discussion. As, as I've heard it, we're certainly available to bounce any ideas off you or be part of any working group discussing solar in the town going forward. So with that, uh, thank you for your time and consideration.
Are you buying all the property or just parcel that your solar is gonna be in?
Uh. Yeah, but it's just one parcel. Um, so we're buying that parcel and the solar is gonna be using it.
And does it touch, does it touch the road or is it out in the fields or where is it?
The property itself has frontage along Salt Springs Road and then.
And it's, it's to the left of the four barns that sit there.
Can anyone pull that up?
I'm happy to do it if it's okay, if the applicant shares.
I, I have two questions if I could ask. It looks like the solar panels are facing the west, which. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but maybe you can explain that to me.
Sure, I'll, I'll, uh, take that.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, um, this, these, um, this project is designed as single axis trackers. And so, uh, this project, you know, when this, when the sun rises in the east. Um, and tracks across the southern sky, the, the solar panels will track along with the sun. Um, it's. Um, it's advantageous because, you know, we get a little bit more production um, by Uh, being oriented to the azimuth of the sun. And then also, if there's ever any, uh, Um, snow or 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 whatnot, we can store or or snow events, you can store the panels. In uh, in a position so that the snow sheds right off of them. And so we see um, a gain in production. Uh, in in the winter months as well, uh, because of that. So we found that the, you know, best uh, best design is a single axis tracker and going.
All right, my my understanding too is that this is part of a larger parcel that includes those four Barns and property going to the, I guess that would be the west. Are you looking for a sub, are you looking for a subdivision also?
No, so this um, was a larger parcel and and around about this time last year. They had subdivided off um, the two parcels where the four barns are and Um, I think a house has already been subdivided.
Okay, I guess I wasn't on the board then.
I think it was about, yeah, June or July last year.
Is this the hail bit? Is this the old hail farm?
This is the one that Alan Olmstead came in. June or July last year, I think Andrew's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know, I know where it is. How many acres are you buying?
The entire, I think it's eighty-five acres.
Eighty-five, okay.
Well, as per the discussion that we just had with the last Group that was on the, on the pan, on the agenda. This is pretty close to the solar farm that we've, we've, we've approved already over on uh, Townsend.
Well, this is a lot bigger.
But isn't it close?
It's close, it's like one little over, it's one mile or a little, around one mile.
That, or is that much between them?
Yeah, it's about one point one miles.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding too, Fred, and talking to Randy and Lisa, right? It's just barely over the one mile, right, Lisa?
Yeah, yeah, just barely over.
Yep, we took that into consideration.
Are you going to farm the the land too? Or is that going to be idle?
Which elements of the land are you referring to, man?
I mean, you you mentioned that there were also, um, there was also farmland there.
Yeah, it's, I believe there is existing, Drazin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, there is existing, I think it's cornfields right here.
Yeah, are you going to maintain those?
Um, when we, uh, when we purchase it, um, that would be our intent is to, um, Is to maintain, it's just a small portion, a small portion of it right now.
How many acres?
Drazin, do you have a number? I'd, I'd have to look at exactly how much is being used now. I don't have that offhand.
Do a rough measurement for you on the screen if you're okay with something that rough. I don't have the number on hand, but we can definitely provide it of how much the existing coverage is vegetative Or farmlands, agricultural farm, established agricultural farmland currently being maintained.
Is this in an ag district?
It is, and we are in the process of doing an agon.
Jamie, are you there?
I am.
The uh, discussion we had about what the law actually says as far as the one mile separation. If we're not The, if the planning board isn't Required to make sure there's a one mile separation, does that mean we can decide that there needs to be two miles? Based on the way it's written? We have discretion?
I don't, I don't think you have discretion to say it need, they need to be five miles apart or anything like that, no. You can have it less than one, less than one. On a finding.
I guess I can't remember how we wrote it. Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Oh, sorry, I was just making sure I was off mute. Um, how many acres did you say would be panels?
So, out of the eighty-five, out of the eighty-five acres, thirty-three acres approximately is the footprint that Is encompassed by the fence limit. Uh, two acres would be the physical disturbances that would occur during the construction. And then the permanent disturbance as in what will be one, once the construction is completed would be less than an acre.
Okay, but thirty-three acres of panels.
Uh, thirty-three acres is the footprint of the fence. We can get you Pan, physical panel coverage.
Does the light that you're showing there exist now, or is that something that will be created?
So we completed a uh, wetland delineation um, in May of twenty twenty, and then a jurisdictional termination Was also obtained on August of twenty-seven, twenty twenty. What is represented in cyan is visually to just represent the limits of that delineation And the JD. So that's just the extent of the wetland. Which we're staying out of.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we, we also did provide, uh, Andrew Day and Source Nobles proactively a visualization Report for this project. Uh, I remember during our last application, that was something that Seemed to be favorable by the board to be seen. So we did also provide a report of At least two views. If there are other views that you would prefer seeing, we can provide those uh, as a part of our next application. But we just figured it it would kind of aid in your uh, preliminary review. And those are off of what we chose as the most visually intrusive locations, which are off, off of, uh, off of the actual road itself.
Crazy, the people who live to the south of the property uh, are at a higher elevation than the uh, solar arrays, are they not?
The, the southeast area tiers up, you're, you're correct. Um, I don't know if it's too drastic of a, of a change. We are roughly three hundred Or two hundred and fifty feet away from Beverly, uh, or or uh, Mrs. Uh, Mulvaney's property on the east side. With a vegetative established woods in between us. But if that is an area that that is something that you would want it to see, we could We could take a look from, from that angle as well. Or if you wanted to just even Sketch on the PDF or a drawing that we provided the views, then we can uh, take the Proper pictures to provide the visualization.
I'm, I'm just wondering about who can see this solar array from their homes.
Uh, Arnie, just to let you know, there's a house on Salt Springs Road That is right to the north of this, and I'm not sure what screening or what, what they plan on doing For that person, because they're right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ari, if you could scroll down to the landscaping plan, um, that could be something That we, we would like your feedback on, see if we feel that that is enough. Uh, but even during the public hearing portion, I I hope that, uh, Uh, either practically we can inquire with the landowner or they can just let us know also if they would like to see more or less. We are trying to keep as much of the existing uh, vegetation that is there between the two. But uh, we are providing additional uh, landscaping.
But you can see, Arnie, that one house, that one lot
Yeah.
Is real close to those panels.
Uh, which, which lot, uh, would you be able to tell me in particular?
Not, not that, I'm not talking about that one. Go to the east. Go down Salt Springs to the east.
Oh, I see, I see. You're saying twelve point one.
There you go.
Right, right, that, that Well, you're close to it now, right, right there, that lot, that's a house.
Is that a condo?
No, it's, it's a single family home. Believe they're duplexes.
Duplex.
Yep. Mark, mark correctly as Dubin's Bluff.
Yeah, okay.
There is some landscaping as proposed, but if There needs to be more or something different, we're obviously open to this board's recommendation and thoughts.
The, the person you're buying this land from, he doesn't own the property to the east and the west of that single If it's duplex, whatever it is, he does not own that property. Uh, right on Salt Springs Road. Right, right there. Okay, all right.
Isn't there a house over to the left on the east of, uh, Down against bluff that the man may live in? I guess he rents that. I went over before when Al Olmstead came and I I think that man owned, rents a house there.
I'm, I'm not sure, Ann.
Yeah, I'll stop the share for one second and maybe I'll pull up a different map. You could further this conversation if you bear with me. So this This is the parcel. It doesn't look like it might not be updated with the um, Subdivision we previously referenced, but I think these are the Donigan's Bluff HOA parcels being referenced.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was talking about, yep.
Have you been approached for a water tank on your property later, maybe?
Uh, no.
No? Cause that, that's high in the back, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now they won't put it that far back in, it'll be closer to the road if they do it.
Well, the, the piece along the road there has to be high, because that's high in the back, way in the back.
Is this for a municipal water tower or?
It's, it's the one that they may join between, down Salt Springs Road for Chitney.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's on that property, and I think it's a little bit further to the east.
Okay. Okay, folks, any other questions?
Let's start.
What were those four barns used for? To make wine?
I think it was, I think it was going to be beer, actually.
I'm not sure.
That's the original hail farm.
Yeah, I think it was going to be hops. I think, I think they're going to make beer, but.
That's a nice lot. That's a good hay lot.
Okay, folks, we got to figure out what we're doing. And in light of the fact that we just postponed the last solar project until June the tenth To get further input from the town board and to try to reach an understanding as comprehensive plan. I think we have no alternative but to post, postpone yours as well to June the tenth. Well. I'm sorry?
Fourteenth.
Fourteen, fourteen.
So, Mr. Lubia, just, just to clarify here, again, we are only a five megawatt lot. I know visually, at least on this drawing, it seems to be larger because it's slightly separated between the two, but it is one application of a five megawatt. It's not multiple that will be subdivided or any such. Uh, and we are more than an acre. And again, just understand this is our first intro to the project. We weren't really looking to have anything approved. Uh, but we were gonna at least, uh, uh, request if, if it's be able to start to schedule a public hearing. Uh, as well as start the coordination with the county. Because uh, as, as, as part of the coordinated review. Yeah, if this, if this board's in a position to perhaps schedule the public hearing at a future date, but At tonight's meeting, declare itself lead agency and begin coordinating secret review, that'd be something we would be looking to, looking for this evening. Understanding the conversation that took place already now.
Okay. Well, I don't see a problem with uh, declaring ourselves lead agency.
I would, I would move that we'd be the lead agency.
Motion by Fred. All in favor?
Hi.
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 Motion carries. Uh, we are lead agency relative to the project. And and at a future point, we can certainly schedule the public hearing, but For the moment, I think we need to really talk to uh, the town board about the comprehensive plan that they are working on. So if, if you have no objection, I think I would entertain a motion to postpone this to June the fourteenth.
So make that second.
Mike Leroy made the motion, second by Richard. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Uh, we will be reporting back to you folks to give you a better understanding once we've got an understanding from uh, the town board itself.
Yeah, understood. And just to close a little bit, if I could, with the remaining seconds. We have, we have a project that's already approved. We are now landowners in the town, so we have a An interest in the town, and we'd love to be a part of any future solar conversations and provide value if we can.
Okay. I, I, thank you, Mr. Goldner.
I, I, I'm confused now because I asked a question earlier, if you own the land and the answer was no. You're now saying you're landowners?
We, on the Taft Solar project, we own property on Taft Road.
Okay.
My mistake, Mr. Rosetti, I apologize.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, John.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
So if everybody's with us, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda. And this is uh, Woodland Hills subdivision. Uh, this is a secret determination for a twenty-one lot subdivision At fifty-two ninety to fifty-three twenty Hoag Lane Fayetteville. It's all on one tax map number one oh four dash one dash thirty-nine point two. We had previously completed all public hearings. Time period went by for additional public comment, and that expired. The applicant was provided with an opportunity to respond to the public's comments, uh, and did so through council. This was adjourned until tonight for a decision relative to the final environmental impact statement. All board members have contacted council and have expressed their thoughts, Their opinions and their rationale for their opinions, um, relative to the final SECR. And that opinion has now been reduced into writing. So I would inquire of the board, have you all had an opportunity to review the following documents? And including an opportunity to comment upon them or make changes. And those documents consisted of the final environmental impact statement For Woodland Hills dated May the tenth, two thousand twenty-one. The second one would be the final environmental impact statement appendix, including all the documents Noted on that FEIS appendix. And thirdly, the proposed resolution to accept the FEIS as complete. Have you all had an opportunity to review that?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Can you take a roll call vote on that, Joe?
Yes, Lisa, would you be kind enough to uh, take a roll call vote on that?
Of course. Arnie?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
And Chairman Lubia.
Yes. Okay, and therefore Um, if you don't mind, I'm going to take a moment to read the, the final, um, Resolution from that final EIS. Now therefore, the planning board of the town of Manlius resolves as follows. The final environmental impact statement dated May tenth, two thousand twenty-one Is accepted as complete. And the planning board hereby directs that the notice of completion of the final environmental impact statement Including the statement itself be filed, posted in accordance with NYCRR section six seventeen point one two. And be it resolved that in accordance with SECR. The findings of the lead agency be finalized no sooner than ten days Following the filing of the FEIS as set forth herein. And be it further resolved that the person of the lead agency to contact for further information regarding the positive declaration is Lisa Beaman, Secretary to the Town Planning Board. I make the motion that we.
Joe, I'm sorry, there needs to be um, a change. It's not um, regarding the positive declaration, it's regarding the um, the FEIS.
Regarding the final FEIS that has been circulated amongst the members.
Correct.
Okay, I am making a motion that we approve the resolution as presented to the membership. I would enter, second by Richard Rosetti. Lisa, would you be kind enough to call a roll as to whether the, the, the members are voting yes or no?
Of course. Arnie?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Fred?
Aye.
And Chairman Lupia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now the final environmental impact statement and the FEIS appendix will be published as required by law on the town website. And the notice of completion will be sent out to all interested and involved agencies in the next day or so. And in addition, the finding of this statement will be so published. Because of a mandatory ten day waiting period, we are unable to make a final vote relative to the petition itself for subdivision and site plan. So that will be heard immediately following our, uh, immediately on our next scheduled meeting, which is right after the ten days expire. That meeting is scheduled for May twenty-fourth. Jamie, am I missing anything?
The only thing I wanted to add is that it, it's not, it's um, the final finding statement also has the ten day uh, period, not just the resolution on the, the final matter.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Uh, therefore, we've issued our final environmental impact statement. We will be voting relative to the project itself on May twenty-fourth.
So the, um, the entirety of this will be available on the website. I'll be working with Lisa Beaman tomorrow to get the proper documents uploaded.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for that. Uh, the last thing on the agenda, there, it is actually not on the agenda, but I promised Richard that I would add it to the agenda. And that was the uh, request for an extension of the building permit by K A G E D Enterprises. This is the property located at eighty-four twenty-eight Raylor Road, Manlius. And Richard, you were making inquiry about what we had done. We had post, we had postponed it for two weeks.
Yep.
We, we have heard that there's progress being made, but that it's insufficient progress for us to move forward on anything. And uh, therefore, the request was made that it be removed from the calendar for this evening. And I granted that request. I wanna give the applicant an opportunity to get the balance cleaned up. I've heard from a neighbor that there is progress being made. And Randy uh, has confirmed progress. We want it cleaned up.
I drove over there. There has been progress, Joe. No doubt about it. He has done some things. I just wanted, and unfortunately, I don't have a light on in my, my room here, but we, i- if I read the motion properly, we gave him two weeks to clean it up. And my point is, the two weeks is complete. So do we grant the extension? Do we give it another two weeks? I think we need to do something based on the last motion we made.
You know, I, I would agree with Rich. We did say two weeks.
We did. We granted him a two week extension. And so we can grant him another two week extension. We can deny it, we can do whatever we want, but I think, I think something needs to be done.
Well, we can entertain a motion. And I would need somebody to make a motion as to whether it's your intent to give a further extension or whether you want a vote to be held relative to uh, the request for the extension.
I think if Randy is working with him, then we could give him an extension of two weeks.
That's a motion, Anne?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
My question then is, what happens if it's not done in two weeks?
We're back here again, Mike.
Yeah, I know.
And we're back here again, but Mike, it's some, at some point, our temperament's gonna be tired out. And, and we're not gonna continue to give extensions. We're, we're gonna reach the point where we're gonna say, let's vote, let's vote on whether to grant him uh, the building permit or not. And, and he needs to understand that uh, that we're not gonna continue doing this. This is not a repeated postponement.
Well, by, by giving him another two weeks, we're just repeating it again.
The weather's supposed to be nicer.
Well, there's a motion in a second, so.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor? I, could I ask this? Uh, those of you that are, are around Randy, does he feel that, that he's making progress and that he will continue to make progress in cleaning up site?
My, my understanding is Fred, that uh, the gentleman that owns the property is a, is a construction contractor and he has mobilized equipment to the site in, in my discussions with Randy. So, you know, things are moving forward, you know, are they moving as fast as we would like? Um, you know, I'm not sure, but you know, Randy was up there this weekend and he thought it was going in the right direction uh, slowly but surely, but uh, the equipment from his report is the equipment's on site and things are being done.
I think, I think Randy should possibly convey to uh, the man that uh, this will likely be the last extension that this board's gonna.
Maybe we could get an official statement for Randy before the next meeting.
Yeah. Lisa and I can work on that with Randy this week.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, my only thought with that is, is they agreed with two weeks at the last meeting. So.
That's, Mike, you're, you're taking the words out of my mouth.
You know? If my word is good for two weeks, I say I'm gonna do it in two weeks, I'll do it in two weeks.
Uh, that's, that's how I feel.
You know?
And, and candidly, we have a right to do that and we could do that. But at the same time, aren't we looking to give a little compassion because we really want that job completed and done the right way?
I think if Randy is overseeing it, that's a positive.
Yeah. Uh, we'll get the word out then, that it, it may be unlikely that he will get any further extensions.
Oh, I agree with that, yeah.
Okay. Um, I have nothing else on my calendar. Does anyone else?
I just have a question, um, because I was writing down a correction there to the resolution. Um, did you take the roll call vote on the, on that last res- resolution? Okay, thanks.
We sure did.
I got distracted.
We have a motion on the floor now.
To.
Yes, we do.
To, to extend it two weeks.
Right.
Uh, and we probably want a roll call vote. Well, uh, point of order, uh, we've had a request for a roll call vote. Uh, Madam Secretary?
Sure. Arnie?
Yes.
Yes. Rich?
No.
No. Valerie?
Yes.
Okay, Mike?
No.
Anne?
Yes.
Yeah. Fred?
Yes.
And Chairman Lupia?
Yes.
Okay. One, two, three, four, five yeses and two noes.
And I'll second, I'm gonna second Fred's motion.
Do, do adjourn?
Oh, wait, Joe, Joe's gotta say the motion carried.
The motion did carry five to two, um, although we're seeing enough, we're seeing enough indications that we're not gonna play with this very much longer.
I wouldn't give him another chance. This is it. If this is not it, I mean, I'll.
Okay, so now we have a motion made by Fred indirectly and second by Richard to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We stand adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.